So excited to get started. I forgot about the tech guys in the back. So I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. And if everyone could stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. Okay, Madam Clerk, could you please call the rule?
Councilmember Bowlin?
Here.
Councilmember Motney?
Here.
Councilmember Eamonn?
Present.
Councilmember Becker?
Here.
Councilmember Urban?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Crable?
Here.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Here.
Mayor Milla Wambwe?
Here. Our next item on the agenda is public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody for a public comment?
We do. We received no public comment by email, but we do have two people registered to speak, Scott Steinling and Serena Fish.
Okay, thank you. Scott, do you want to step forward?
Mayor, did you want to start with your statement?
I was getting to that.
Sorry.
No, no, I'm just kidding. Thank you for reminding me. Public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It is also an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view. To maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of all views, speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record, but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes, and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time ceased. Thank you. You may go ahead, Scott.
Scott Steinling, Ward five. I was in front of 205 Parkview Drive Saturday, May 7th, and about 5 o'clock, and I, when I hit a pothole, and then they're all over the city soon enough, and ruined two wheel discs and a tire. I wish the city would wake up and fill these cotton-picking potholes. The sidewalks are not ADA accessible, and that was a law 32 years ago, January 1st. I do not think that the city would wait 32 years if a personal owner did not pay the property taxes. The storm inlets in front of and the 100 block of Parkview and the 200 block of Fleetwood Drive are both below what is safe to bend down. I'll just, when they're plugged up, I just call the city and let them come out and clean them up. I was cleaning them out, but I'm not going to risk my life to do it. The sidewalks, the panels were up and down so bad that somebody was within a walker that their son lives two doors from me. They had to turn around and go back. Finally, the city woke up and patched them. But you know, that, that is, that's unforgivable as far as I'm concerned. I mean, you would think that the city, as you come into the city of Bloomington, that they say, "Welcome to Bloomington, home of the potholes, rotten roads, enter at your own risk." I realize that the storm inlets were asphalted into the road 10 years ago. They said we would be out in the spring. I assumed the spring of the next year, and I'm still waiting. I guess that's pretty much everything I've got to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Scott. Next?
Next up is Serena Fish.
Serena Fish, Ward six. Miller Park Neighbors, West Side Neighbors Association Administrator. I'm very positive tonight. I attended a ribbon cutting at Miller Park Zoo this week for a new area, which is going to be available for even more events, sound, music, great photo opportunity. And I'd like to thank Ward two, Donna, Ward six, Misty, and Ward nine, Mr. Tom, for coming out and supporting our community. The West Side has a lot to order, offer, and it was great to see when we walked out after the ceremony, the kids lined up to get in. And I think they had four buses of kids coming special that day. So thank you all of the council people who felt it was important enough for the West Side to come. Also, I would just like to say congratulations to our new officers as a member of the PSC RB board. Welcome. We're glad to have you. Thank you.
Thank you, Serena.
There's no further public comment.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is a Ward one appointment. Consideration and action to approve the appointment of Grant Walsh. Grant, if you want to maybe raise your hands if people can see you, thank you. And as submitted by me, after much consideration, I have made the decision to appoint Grant for the vacant Ward one seat. During our conversation, it became increasingly clear that Grant is an individual who is forthright and also thoughtful. One person I asked about Grant, and I'm paraphrasing here, said that they knew him as a parent, and if they had to judge him by the character of his children, he is a wonderful person. He served as the Director of YMCA for several years back in Ohio. Since then, he has been in the technology field. He is a longtime resident of Bloomington who cares about the issues facing his ward, but also understands how they fit within the larger context of the city. He is excited about the growth that the city is experiencing and would like to contribute to making our city even better. In doing so, Grant expresses willingness to listen to different points of views. And for that reason, I believe he will make a wonderful colleague for council members, because we know there's differences of views on the council always. So with that, I'd like to ask for a motion and a second to approve the appointment of Grant Walsh for the Ward one seat.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Bowlin. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Urban. And is there any discussion, comments? Let's see. Okay, we'll start by Councilmember Crumpler.
Thank you, Mayor. I would actually like to thank all the individuals who put their names forward to serve on city council. It was a strong pool, which for me signaled a wide interest in municipal government, and I think that's a very healthy thing. Just briefly, I had the opportunity to meet with Grant. I experienced, I appreciated his experience working in both nonprofit and profit arenas. He has a strong tech, excuse me, technology background, and I believe he's committed to service, which is something that we really value on the council. And finally, I think he has a genuine interest in improving the quality of life in our community, and I support his nomination for this, for Ward one. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go with Councilmember Crable.
So from what I've learned, I don't believe Mr. Walsh is the right candidate to replace Jamie Mathieu in Ward one. Jamie was just elected last year, and he has been elected on prior occasions, so we can have some confidence that Jamie represented the needs and views of Ward one constituents very well. Jamie had always considered himself middle of the road on votes, and I believe his voting record bears that out. Instead, I believe this is a selection made to intentionally move the council in a more conservative direction. Of course, that is the mayor's prerogative. I just disagree, so I'll be voting no.
Thank you. Councilmember Eamonn?
Yes, and I too want to thank all of the candidates who put forward their names. It was a very strong pool. And I respect Mr. Walsh's application and commend him in putting himself forward for this role. However, because I contend that other candidates were more aligned with former Alderman Mathieu, I will not be supporting this appointment. Thank you.
Okay, does it look like we have anybody else? So, Madam Clerk, do we link?
Yeah, we'll do electronic voting, and it's there now.
No, yeah, we'll take that. No, actually.
It's appearing as a no.
We would have taken a yes, though. Okay. Let me see, I was a math major, so we got, what, 662? Okay, so there are two names to announce, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilmember Crable and Councilmember Eamonn.
Okay, thank you. Well, Grant, congratulations. So we're going to go ahead and proceed to the oath of office, and you can then take your seat. Thank you. Let the fun begin, Grant. All right, ready? Okay. Okay, thank you, everyone. Next item on the agenda is recognition and appointments. And we're going to start with 7A presentation of the seat of Bloomington Police Department Police Officers Commission Certificate to Officers Matthew Summers and Kerry Johnson upon completion, their completion of the probationary period as requested by the police department. I believe the chief is here to present. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council. City Manager, Deputy City Manager, thank you for the opportunity to come before you today to acknowledge two of our finest who have joined the ranks with the Bloomington Police Department. Each have successfully completed an intense 18-month probation and training, which consisted of a 14-week police training academy program. These officers chose this noble profession, which requires a servant heart, high integrity, and tremendous courage. They respond to danger and problems in this community without hesitation. And it's an honor to, to say that both of them are Bloomington residents. They went to school here in town. And, and also both are veterans. I will start with Kerry Johnson. Kerry attended Bloomington High School where she was an athlete. She served in the Illinois Army National Guard after graduating and attended Lincoln College on a basketball scholarship. Kerry worked at State Farm for three years prior to being hired by the Bloomington Police Department. She completed her training academy at the McLean County Law Enforcement Training Center. Kerry has received an exemplary performance award for teamwork during his shots fired, calls for service, which resulted in an arrest. Kerry serves on the Bloomington Police Department's Recruitment and Upward Mobility Committee and as a field recruiter. Kerry has two children, Callie and Canon. While off duty, she enjoys spending time with both family and friends. It's a pleasure to present you with this commission. Next, we'll have Matt Summers. Matt graduated from Normal Community West High School and Illinois State University. Matthew is a veteran who has served in the Third Ranger Battalion, 75th Ranger Regiment of the United States Army as a sniper team one leader for eight years. Before joining the Bloomington Police Department and upon graduation from ISU, Matthew was a paralegal for a short time. Matthew is recently, was recently selected to serve on the Bloomington Police Department's Special Weapons and Tactics Team. He is an avid outdoorsman, enjoys working out and being active with his family. Matthew has been married to his wonderful wife Ashley for three years, and they have three beautiful daughters, Adely, Kindly, and Oakley, and one boy, Cameron. Matthew is involved in his church, Crosspoint Church of God, that holds several outreach opportunities in our community. Matthew, it is an honor and a pleasure to join, or I'm sorry, to have you join the police department and certainly present you with your commission tonight. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Chief, and thank you both to Officer, Officers Johnson and Summers for your service. We know it's, it's a difficult time to be in law enforcement, but we certainly appreciate it. Thank you very much. Our next item is a proclamation for Reverend Dr. Bridget Black as requested by the Administration Department. And I believe we have both Gregory and Jeffrey Black Pastor, who are Pastor Black's brothers. Sure. And if you would like to step up to the podium, both of you, while I read this, and when I'm done reading it, you're certainly most welcome to make a few remarks if you'd like. So a proclamation in memory of Reverend Dr. Bridget Black. Whereas Reverend Dr. Bridget Black began her work in the Bloomington Normal Community in 2016 as pastor of Wayman African Methodist Episcopal Church. As the first home of the local chapter of the NAACP, Wayman has a history of fighting for justice and equality in this county, and that mission is also reflected in the life and work of Reverend Dr. Black. And whereas, from the age of five, after learning a quote by the Reverend Jesse Jackson, Reverend Dr. Black worked for change and justice. She was trained in restorative justice practices and put that training to use where it was necessary. And whereas Reverend Dr. Black worked with Not in Our Town by organizing community listening circles after the George Floyd incident and the elections, the community listening circles provided a safe environment to dialogue about racism. And whereas, as an advocate of, for human rights for all, she helped lead the charge to educate and inform the community regarding COVID-19 and help organize getting vaccinations in the arms of African-American seniors and frontline workers by bringing the vaccines to an African-American church in the community. And whereas Reverend Dr. Black was an exemplary pastor, leader, Bible scholar, teacher, and mentor that cared deeply about the community. She served on and led numerous church committees and community boards, both locally and regionally, including the City of Bloomington Public Safety and Community Relations Board. And whereas she was a recipient of many honors for her community work, including a 2020 YWCA Women of Distinction Award, the NAACP Freedom Fund 2021 Merlin Kennedy Community Service Award, and the 2022 Bloomington and Normal Human Relations Commission I Have a Dream Award. Now, therefore, I, Mboka Malambe, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, Illinois, do hereby encourage each of us to celebrate the life of Reverend Dr. Bridget Black and to reflect upon her contributions in our community and beyond. Thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, city officials. On behalf of Reverend Dr. Bridget Black and her family, we say thank you, thank you, thank you. God bless you all.
Our next item is a proclamation for National EMS Week as requested by the Administration Department. And I believe we have Tony Salvatore EMS Supervisor to receive it. Okay, it's Tony and friends. A proclamation in recognition of EMS Week for May 15 through 21, 2022. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, prehospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance the lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, I, Mboka Malambe, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15 through 21, 2022 as Emergency Medical Services Week. With the EMS Strong theme, EMS Week Rising to the Challenge, I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Thank you.
All right, so on behalf of my coworkers here, I'd like to say thank you to the city council and the citizens for the continued support of your fire department. You guys really are the reason why we do what we do. I think this week is extremely important, just like I, like that said, to say thank you to everybody that does what we do. Yeah, that's, that's, you, you're, you're, you really are the reason that, that we're out here. The, the support, we can't, we can't say thank you enough for it truthfully. That, and I, and I mean that in my personal opinion and statistically speaking, the, the residents of Bloomington get some of the highest quality care in the state, and that's, that's no question.
Definitely. Thank you very much. I do, I do agree, and I definitely appreciate everything that you do, because you, you jump in in situations where most of us would jump out. So, thank you. Do you want to come up? Okay, the next item on the agenda is a proclamation for Building Safety Month as requested by the Administration Department, and I believe Melissa Hahn, our Director of Economic Development, is here to accept the proclamation. I was gonna say award, but kind of the same, right? A proclamation in recognition of Building Safety Month. Whereas our city is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role of our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disaster strikes. And whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety, and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas the modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our communities' largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code, code officials, who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas Safety for All: Building Codes in Action, the theme for Building Safety Month 2022, encourages us all to raise awareness about planning for safe and sustainable construction, career opportunities in building safety, understanding disaster mitigation, energy conservation, and creating a safe and abundant water supply to all our benefit. And whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in in protecting lives and property. Now, therefore, I, Mboka Malambe, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2022 as Building Safety Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for this opportunity to highlight a division in our economic and community development team. I'd like to recognize Chris McAllister, the building official, and his division, the Building Safety Division, for all their hard work that they do to keep our community safe. Just to highlight a little bit, they've completed over 4,500 inspections last year in 2021. And so far this year in 2022, up to April 30, they had completed 1,557 building safety inspections. So they are hard at work out there every day. So thank you for this opportunity to highlight them.
Thank you. I don't think she wants to be in the picture. Okay. Let's see. Okay, the next item on the agenda is recognition of boards and commission appointments and reappointments as requested by the Administration Department. I think we have a slideshow. No music? Sure?
First up, we have Joya Davis with the Citizens Beautification Committee, Ron Frazier also with the Citizens Beautification Committee, Kim Miller Historic Preservation Commission. I believe Kim was present. Oh, there she is. Okay, wait. And if anyone else is present, please feel free to stand if you'd like. We've got Vivian Dottora with the Human Relations Commission. This is a reappointment. Alicia Henry with the Library Board of Trustees, Van Miller also with the Library Board of Trustees, Julian Westerhout with the Library Board of Trustees, Arthur Taylor, Public Safety and Community Relations Board, Jeff Woodard also with the Public Safety and Community Relations Board. And those are our ones. There's quite a few. Congratulations and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone who serves. I know it's not very easy. It takes quite a bit of time and, you know, a lot of learning, but we definitely appreciate the time that you put into this. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that anybody would like to have removed? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to? Okay, motion by?
I'll second.
Okay, all right. I'll just be quiet from now on. So if you want to go ahead and vote, and do we have grants set up or does he do a voice vote?
So we're going to do electronic vote for everyone. And then as soon as we get through with that, then I'll call on a city council member Walsh. Yeah, I'll get that right. Thanks. Councilmember Walsh, how would you like to vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the consent agenda passes. There are no needs to announce. See, our next item is a public hearing on the 2022 CDBG Annual Action Plan as requested by the Economic and Community Development Department. And I don't know if City Manager Gleason has some comments to make or? And actually, let me, what is the time right now? So it's 6:35. So we're just going to go ahead and declare the the public hearing open. 6:35.
You're going to do this alone, Melissa, or is Michael coming up?
Michael is coming up. I didn't know if you had any opening comments or?
No, I'll go ahead and hand it to you.
All right. All right. Well, I just, for those of you that haven't met him, I just wanted to introduce Community Enhancement Division Manager, Michael Sinnett, and he'll be presenting the 2022 Proposed Annual Action Plan this evening. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm here to present, obviously, the Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan for the year 2022. Next slide, please. Thanks. Program year 2022, which is May 1 of this year through April 30 of next, is the 48th year that the city has administered the CDBG program. This funding represents annual allocations from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to meet national objectives related to community development. So each year, an annual action plan is created to determine annual projects that will be undertaken to achieve goals in our consolidated plan, in our consolidated plan, which runs from 2020 to 2024. This annual action plan is the third year of our consolidated plan as well. Next slide, please. Thank you. This year in February, we opened requests for proposals. Applications were due in March of this year. RFPs were used for public service, planning, and public facility and infrastructure funds. The application breakdown by funding request, we had seven for public service. We had three for planning, and we had three for public facilities and infrastructure. Next slide, please. So part of our annual goals and funding would be to the preservation of existing affordable housing stock, which is $388,000. The breakdown for that is $305,000 for housing rehabilitation, $55,000 in lead hazard control grant match from CDBG, and then $33,000 for rehabilitation service delivery. So the admin of those programs. Another goal for us is elimination of slum light conditions, a total of $41,000 out of the CDBG budget for that. So we have $35,000 for residential housing demolition, and then $6,000 for the admin of the delivery service of that of that demo program. Next slide, please. Also looking to support the provision of public service activities. That's a total of $82,500. Within that, the breakdown is $35,000 to PATH, homeless and emergency services, recycling furniture for families to receive $5,000. The West Bloomington Revitalization Project, a project leader position there for $21,000. OSF Piecemeals is receiving $5,000, and KTB Financial Services, $16,500. Next slide, please. Also providing quality service and facilities. So that total is $258,064. $184,000 of that will go to sidewalk improvements. $30,000 will go to MCCA for ADA-compliant improvements around the city. The Bloomington Housing Authority Security Camera Install for the Irving Apartments has a total of $44,064. To administer the CDBG program effectively and proficiently, we have a budget of admin of $91,300. Prairie State Legal Services Fair Housing Program will get $15,000 of that. Section 3 Training with the Bloomington Housing Authority will get $10,000 of that. The McLean County Regional Planning Commission Housing Planning will get $36,000 of that. And then just general CDBG admin comes in at $30,300. So our total investment this year for CDBG in the annual action plan is Next slide, please. So the grant revenues to get us to that, that total 860,000 plus, our estimated annual allocation, and we won't have those numbers finalized until we get them from HUD, but the estimate there is $551,280. We collect budget about $30,000 in program income from housing rehabilitation loans every year. Currently, the city is carrying over $279,484 in CDBG carryover from previous program years, and that's how we got our total. Last slide, please. So public comment for the annual action plan is open until June 10. Obviously, presenting now for action for the City Council, then this action plan would be approved by HUD. And if there's any public comment contact, if there's anything, any questions or concerns that anyone has, and regarding the annual action plan, you can always reach out to me at the email address or phone number below.
Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation, Michael. At this point, we are going to ask anyone from the public that wants to speak to come forward, and individuals will be allowed to speak only once. And we ask that you keep your remarks to five minutes or less so that we can get through everyone that desires to speak. So Madam, do we have anybody who?
We did not have anyone register.
Okay, sounds good. That was easy. Are there any comments from the council? Okay, councilmember Creep.
Thank you. So yeah, I just a few things. And some of the things I wanted just to confirm and share that Melissa answered for me today. But so I guess first question would be, how will we share this with the public to allow them to comment? I guess what's the means to do that?
We have a copy of the annual action plan currently at the library. So it can be reviewed as a library.
Anything online?
Once it's accepted by council, we can post it publicly online.
But would that be after before the public comment period ends?
Believe it's also on our website.
Now?
Yes.
Okay, okay, good. And yeah, maybe I might want to share the PowerPoint with my constituents. You know, just an easy way to look at things. You mentioned Section 3 Training. I looked just looked that up, and that's to provide employment opportunities to people that are receiving HUD assistance, which is good. I know this kind of goes along, like some of the CDBG stuff goes along with IDA, what IDA does. And these are the questions that Melissa answered for me. We went through that on the consent agenda, but it looks like we've got a combined, I think, maybe around 800,000, which may help about 15 residents. While the money has to be used, well, while there's a deadline of the end of the year, that money's still going to be available after that time, from what Melissa said. And people receiving that do not have to put up the money and then get reimbursed. They get assistance upfront. If I said anything wrong, let me know.
So IDA is separate from CDBG?
I know. I was just, yeah.
So IDA is an Illinois state funded program.
I know that.
None of the people that we assist through IDA, single-family rehab, have to put up any money. They are typically income qualified to receive aid through that program. The funding that is has a deadline of 12/31. That is the last time between now and December 31 that we can utilize those funds.
But you do, I think from what Melissa said, you do think you you are going to be able to do that with the number of contractors that you have?
The number of contractors and current applications would indicate that the pace we're moving at right now.
Okay. Thank you. Let me move into just a couple of questions on the CDBG. Can the CDBG funds sometimes be used to not only help homeowners but also renters?
Depending on the program and as long as they're income qualified or they meet a national objective, yes.
And do you have any examples of how that could happen? It doesn't seem like that's part of the program this year.
So with single-family rehab, we only target owner-occupied properties. With our lead abatement program, we will be able to move into and do lead abatement in rental properties.
Okay. And also on lead abatement, that hasn't been able to, that hasn't started yet because of COVID, but it's expected to start in the fall, right?
Yes, I would say by the end of summer, yes.
And then could the CDBG funds be used for affordable housing, like to pay for underground infrastructure or sidewalks? Is it possible?
So public infrastructure is something that we target, and we have the budget in the allocation for this coming up year. So the way we diversify the CDBG portfolio is in line with the consolidated plan. So only some of, only a small portion of the funds go to public infrastructure like sidewalks. Some of our demo properties, we do have some CDBG funds to, if we demo a house with CDBG monies, we can then put in infrastructure in terms of like sewer line and water line on some properties, but that's after we have demoed a property.
So let's say if a developer comes in and wants to build affordable housing, and they need infrastructure, maybe sidewalks for their for their property. As part of an incentive plan, can CDBG funds be used for that?
Not typically. So you have to have a qualifying area. So you either have to qualify LMI on census block or by limited clientele. I wouldn't say that it's impossible, but we'd have, I'd have to know more specific information to make that possible.
I appreciate your answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay. Seeing no other questions, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:46 and move right into the next public hearing. The public hearing on a proposed annexation agreement with Sale Barn Properties LLC for land located north of West Hamilton Road and west of South Main Street in McLean County, Illinois, consisting of 46 acres, more or less, as requested by the Economic and Community Development Department. And I'm going to call to order and open this hearing at 6:47 and turn it over to City Manager Gleason for introductory remarks.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and to the community. The last council meeting was a busy one, and I promised more. This is the more. And this is a public hearing to discuss this matter. And then we get to the regular agenda, and there'll be three action items that come before council. Kimberly, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Council, and Mayor. We are so excited to have a second annexation and write in a row. So this particular one is for property located west of Hamilton, sorry, north of West Hamilton, south of Main Street is the general area where that is located. What was on the consent agenda included a final plat that was also related to this. So now we've taken a 55-acre parcel, reduced it to about 46 acres, and that is the subject of this. There's a tiny little piece that's also part of it. It's it's we're also cleaning up some property lines while we're at it. So you've got that piece. This right here is the hearing. There's a requirement, as you remember from the last time we just did this, there's a requirement for a public hearing at the Planning Commission, which was already done last month. And then this is the second public hearing right here before council. After this, you'll vote on the actual resolution for the hearing itself. Then you'll have an ordinance before you. And as I mentioned last time, we could be waiting 20 years. We're not. We're waiting just a couple of minutes. Part of why this is so exciting, it's happening quickly. So that vote on the ordinance brings them into the city. And then the final piece, because they are coming into the city with a request to be zoned B1, which is commercial zoning, all of our BC and D districts require a legislative site review, so we'll jump, which is kind of related to the building permits. And in that the permitting stage, you will see that as well. Just like last time, also, everything's kind of contingent. We needed the final plat. We've got that. The, well, explain that as we get to each piece on what all the contingencies are as they're relevant. I would like to go ahead and turn this over, though, to, we have Jeremy Kelly, who is the Secretary for the Executive Board for Prairie City's Soccer League. He has a slide presentation for you, and then I can also answer any questions after.
Kim makes it so simple. So appreciate being here. Like Ken said, I'm Jeremy Kelly. I'm the Secretary of the Prairie City Soccer League, aka FC Central Illinois, joined off podium here by our President Tim Cook. AKA FC Central Illinois, joined off podium here by our President Tim Cook and landlord Jim, Jim Shirk and co-applicant, I believe, on the application, so.
Mr. Kelly, I apologize, I just need to swear you in for just a second. I was trying to find a good time to get in. If you'll just raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, please continue.
So, we're very excited to be here finally. As you can tell, there's been a lot of work that's gone into this, and just want to give a couple of minutes about who we are, how we got here, and what we're looking to do, and then we'll answer any questions you guys want. So, next slide if we can. PCSL slash FC Central Illinois, there were two 501(c)(3) nonprofits that came together, two different clubs, under one organization, so the corporation is PCSL, but many people know us by the FC Central Illinois name. We are a 501(c)(3) corporation in Bloomington. PCSL's been around for about forty-five years now, and we provide soccer-level programming at the recreational level with our PCSL, which is about fourteen hundred kids. On the travel side, about six hundred kids under the FC Central Illinois banner, and then the special needs athletes play in the top soccer, that's been down for a couple of years because of COVID. And then also, we have more of the elite level, Central Illinois United or Eclipse. So, total, you have about two thousand kids playing soccer here in Bloomington Normal under this club. Next slide. We are currently playing at Community Fields, which I think most everybody's aware that we are losing our lease, we're in the final year. The last extension was this last year, so we lose our fields at the end of this year, which is why we're very excited that we've already locked up the land at the proposed location, the old Sail Barn, and have the ability to buy that. We're here for the long term, we've had some people say, is this a few-year thing? We're not getting into that situation again, we intend to be here and stay here, we're just moving to a different spot within Bloomington. The development plans at this field, as you probably have seen or might be seeing here a bit, there's eight fields total, so think of this more as a community fields replacement. It's not a major complex, unfortunately, you know, it's not something that's going to bring people nationwide in here. It will primarily handle our club trainings, our club weekends, games, you know, might be a fifty, sixty-team tournament sort of, sort of deal, but it is not, and I want to be clear, it is not a five-hundred-team tournament sort of facility. It's going to take care of the local and bring some people into the community, which will be good. I also should note, we get asked this all the time, as far as the funding, it's funded entirely with donations, fundraising loans, and private funds. Next slide. So, the new complex features, I'll first and foremost say that we have started this entire process thinking of the neighbors along the way, so we actually had some pre-meetings with the neighbors, we invited them out, heard their concerns, their complaints, took that into account, we were already thinking ahead, as far as a lot of the normal things you think of, sound, lights, traffic, water, et cetera. At the Planning Commission, a couple of neighbors did stand up and voice some concerns, and then met us in the hall and said, you've done everything you can, we appreciate the partnership, looking forward to this. So, everybody seems very on board with this. I know our club and our parents are very excited. We are looking to start to break ground as soon as we can, start growing grass, but we are looking eventually to two turf and lit fields, two grass-lit fields, which are the two fields that are already there, we're going to remake those, and then have four training fields, basically a flat area where kids can train, and we can move that around and utilize that as we need. There will be later on bathrooms and concessions, and like I said, while it will primarily take care of our club, we are always open, if others want to come in, if we have the availability, timing, we want to be good community neighbors and allow people to come in and use the facility, whether that's an IHSA, whether that's a one-off, whether it's a lacrosse, et cetera. It'll just all depend on size and availability. And then finally, we're pretty excited because we think that it's going to bring more traffic to Bloomington Normal on a lower scale, especially down in the, that area of Bloomington Normal, which should, should be a positive. So, with that, I think that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you very much, Jeremy. I think at this point, we are going to ask if there is any, anyone that wants to provide public input?
We received no registered, no one registered for testimony.
Okay, well, awesome. So, council, time for questions, so. Okay, Councilmember Emig?
Thank you for the presentation. I appreciated all of the detailed responses to in the Planning Commission minutes, so, so thank you for that. I have two questions. Are you losing the lease out at the airport because of safety issues, or is it just that it's constantly being renewed or having to renew over time?
Yeah, that's, that's been a debate for a while. I wasn't on the board ten years ago, fifteen years ago, when this all started, of course, but we've heard from the airport the entire time that, you know, why they like, like the concept of us being there right off the runway, there's some concerns, and regardless of the reason, they're the landlord and they're saying you need to leave. Five years ago, they said you will not get another lease, and we barely got that lease just because we weren't ready with a new site, and, and this is, they've been clear from the day one, this is the last and final lease.
Thank you for clarifying that. And I have a question about sidewalks. Will you be putting in any asphalt or concrete? Well, yes, asphalt, but.
So, so there's existing sidewalks there, kind of Constitution Trail, and it will be our responsibility to, you know, keep that up where cars coming in and out, so it's not getting destroyed and whatnot. We don't have, we have some plans for sidewalks, everything's ADA, very, very compliant there. We have sidewalks that go down to where the concession bathroom building is set up, there'll be a little bit of sidewalk between the two fields, and we've actually enlarged it so that if there's an accident, emergency needs to get in, ambulance, whatnot, they can get in there, but it wouldn't be public sidewalks, because those are already on the south side, and we don't, won't be using the side along Main Street.
Okay, thank you. I, I also ask because of a follow-up question to, if at all possible, to research using pervious concrete, which absorbs the water, and I know that question came up in the Planning Commission meeting as well, but overall, this sounds like a really exciting project, and a big fan of youth soccer, so thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes, this is potentially in my ward, and I'm very happy. I do have just some questions, I read the Planning Commission packet, and there was a mention of fence, will that be completely around the periphery of the fields for safety?
So, so, yeah, there's a fence, especially around the turf field, it's about a four-foot, one of those, like, black goes into the curb, but that goes around there. There will be some fencing as far as, like, the soccer catch nets.
Sure.
So, you know, when you blast a soccer ball, it doesn't go flying, but we're not necessarily planning on fencing the entire area. There'll be a gate along the front to stop cars, you know, semis, whatnot, coming in, but past that, that's the extent of the fencing that we're planning.
I was just thinking of, Hamilton is, you know, a speedway, and I was just concerned about kids and balls, you know, going off.
So, we've designed it actually so that all of that is away from, away from Hamilton as much as we can, and then away, very much away from Main Street. Then also, when you have the trees and some of the topography that we're doing to block wind, to block sound, the hope is that it won't, there won't be the kick the ball across the street sort of scenario.
I figured, you know, you're working with kids, you'll be safety, but I just wanted to clarify that. And I do also know that at the Planning Commission meeting, there was a, an issue with traffic, and you said one road in or one driveway in, one driveway out, but it's really close to Main Street, and would there ever be a need possibly for the police to be directing traffic? Do you think the volume would be necessary for that?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question, because as you may or may not be aware, at our current facility, we only have one entrance in, and we do have the police there for the bigger tournaments. The way we're looking at design for the traffic is basically the side that's closest to Main Street, on bigger days, if we have a lot of people, we'll make that an in-only, and the out, to send people back down to, I'm blanking on the street, goes, goes up there by Six Points Road and send people around, so you're not getting a bunch of traffic backing up, trying to turn left on the Main Street. So, that, we've looked at the traffic engineering side, that should be a good flow, and then also came up about for emergency purposes, there is a second entrance off of Main Street that we can use for emergency purposes if we needed to.
But there is a possibility that you may need traffic control when there's a lot of, a lot of games.
Could be, could be, but I don't really see us getting into that situation too much.
Okay, just a question, thank you.
Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, and, and it excites me to see that, you know, that piece of property, something is going to happen with, you know, since the Sail Barn went down, and you've got a great big parking lot there and just some grass, and it's good to see something happening there, especially something like soccer, which is just fantastic exercise for the kids, and it's fun watching them all sit out there and play. One question that I had regarding it is, with the age of the Sail Barn when it was there, and with looking forward to, in the meeting, to where we talk about the sewer hookups and all that, that tells me that the Sail Barn may not have been hooked up to the city sewer. And what about the septic tank? Has it been removed, and has there been any concern regarding the septic field that would have been there?
So, some of those might not be for me, it'd be for more Mr. Shirk, that landowner that's had it previously. What I can tell you, based on talking with our engineers and planning and all those that we've dealt with, we are looking, there's an existing sewer connection more on the north end of it, and we're just coming off of that. We have not been looking at septic or septic fields or any of that, where the site of the Sail Barn is, a lot of that is in the area that we're not using of the complex. So, we're more using the, the side that's to the west, all the grassy area there for that, and then we're hooking on to the septic right up at the corner.
Okay, thank you.
Or not the septic, I'm sorry, the sewer, the sewer.
Okay. Okay, it doesn't look like there are any other questions. I know we have a lot more to, to talk about down the road, but I just want to say congratulations on the, on the project, because it's been, it's been a long time coming.
Yep, and, and we want to thank Mr. Gleason, Mr. Tyus, the entire staff, we would not be here without a lot of work by various members, Jeff, Kim.
At this point, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing at seven oh two PM, but there is more to come on this. Okay, so, we're going to move on to the regular agenda with item ten A, and items ten A, B, C are all related to this particular issue, and I think, I don't know how you want to proceed, maybe we'll take them one after the other. So, I'm gonna, so the first one would be ten A, consideration and action on the resolution approving an annexation agreement with Sail Barn Properties LLC for land located north of West Hamilton Road and west of South Main Street in McLean County, Illinois, consisting of forty-six acres, more or less, as requested by the Economic and Community Development Department, and I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and to the community. Again, this is a very exciting project, and it's going to be in a very prominent location south into town. Dare I say, you know, it will spur additional development, and I think it will, definitely going to increase the traffic in that part of the community, that I think those are very possible opportunities that we can see as a result of this. But let me just simply say this, regardless of that, thank you for the continued interest, thank you, Mr. Shirk, for the, the land to locate this property, and as I said before, before the public hearing, we have three action items on the regular agenda. Kimberly, if you would, walk us through all of those, allow for council to comment to those, and obviously can take B and see if there's additional comments, or we possibly take care of them all right now.
If I take care of them all right now, do you, would you like me to just introduce the rest of them, and then you can vote, vote, vote?
I do, and, and that will allow council, potentially with some of the questions that might come up, that could be a part of the B item and the C item, and then we'll take these individually as council desires. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Councilman Mayor. So, ten A is the resolution that approves the agreement that we just had the hearing on. So, that is the agreement of the terms, and that includes, you know, addresses development obligations that include the sewer, the water, stormwater detention, there's an obligation to develop as proposed, which is one of the, it's item C. So, all of those things are covered in the agreement, and then the agreement becomes the palette as we come back for future things to be well. The item B is the petition itself, that's, we're ready to annex and come into the city, please approve this ordinance, is what that, that request is. There are actually two ordinances associated with item B. One is the, actually, they're essentially both map amendments. One amends the city boundary, brings them in, and it's in accordance with the terms of the agreement, and then the other is changing the zoning itself. There's a default zoning gag, and we're going to go to the B1 commercial. So, that's what you've got there, and then, item C is the legislative site review, and as I just mentioned previously, that is the, the site development itself that's kind of down the road. This is the one that is contingent on all things being ready, and one of those all things is something that you're not seeing tonight, and that's back, if you remember the final plat, there are construction documents when you have a subdivision that are associated with that. That's where the utilities and the, you know, the road and a number of things that are related to the subdivision itself come into play. All of that has to be done and accepted before we can actually issue building permits related to, well, and the review of the building permits and all that stuff has to be submitted, there's drainage, there's a whole lot of things, but all of that comes in. So, this is sort of like a, a pre-approval, if you will, but just like with what we saw two weeks ago, it flowed to show the whole package all at one time. That's really it.
Sounds good, so I think we're going to do questions from council, and then after that, we'll vote each one of them separately, okay? Any questions from council?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, well, the motion will be to, for this, the first one?
For A.
For A, okay, all right, to approve A as presented. Okay, so, Councilmember Bowlin, second was, Councilmember Crepe, okay, sounds good. Any discussion? Okay, no, let's go ahead and vote.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, sounds good. Item ten A passes, no needs to announce, and we're going to move on to, is there a motion for item ten B?
I'll make that motion for item B.
I'll second.
Councilmember Bowlin, and then second by Councilmember Crumpler.
Councilmember Crumpler, could you please refresh?
Yeah, I just, it should be there now.
Got it. Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, item ten B passes, no needs to announce, is there a motion for item ten C?
I'll make the motion to accept item C as presented.
Okay, Councilmember Bowlin, and then second by Councilmember Becker.
Councilmember Emig, would you please refresh? Councilmember Eming, would you please refresh? Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The item passes, no needs to announce. Thank you very much. Congratulations all. And thank you, Mr. Shirk. Okay, the next item on the agenda is item ten D. Consideration and action on a resolution establishing the streets to be resurfaced in fiscal year twenty twenty three. Additional streets that could be resurfaced in fiscal year twenty twenty three using A R P Act funds. And the streets to be resurfaced in fiscal year twenty twenty four. Authorization to waive the technical beating requirements and authorization for city staff to negotiate a contract with Road Construction, a division of United Contractors Midwest for the F Y twenty twenty three general street resurfacing program as requested by the Public Works Department. And I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and to the community. This is actually a very exciting presentation. We're talking about asphalt and concrete projects for the city of Bloomington. As the community recalls, we have a website that's dedicated to our streets. We update that, we show the revenues in, the revenues out, or I'm sorry, the expenses out. And this also is, I believe, the second year, Kevin, you'll correct me, I'm sure, in your presentation. But where we've taken a three-year approach to identifying the streets that we're working on to increase the efficiency. With the prime contractor in the past, we tried to touch every single ward. And what we've done now is in the efficiencies that we have proposed to a council and it was adopted, this will be an additional year of that. We find that the lack of deployment to different parts of the community saves costs and allows us to do more with the taxpayer dollars. Additionally, this year, we as staff heard council loud and clear to do more in terms of concrete and asphalt projects. We have dedicated two million dollars of the ARPA funds to be able to provide about nine million dollars in asphalt and concrete projects for this construction season twenty two, which is contained in the F Y twenty three budget. Kevin, I'm going to turn it over to you. And then we also have City Engineer Craig Schonkweiler that is going to assist as well. Kevin?
Thank you, City Manager Gleason, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight. And Craig Schonkweiler has been very instrumental in his engineering division and putting all this information together. So my thanks to him for that. Next slide, please. As the City Manager mentioned, we have an annual budget allotment that's about seven million dollars. And the pie chart breakdown is based on that, but certainly is that American Rescue Plan Act money becomes available. We are looking to utilize that this year in what we would call Part B of a plan. But some of the projects have were approved tonight in the consent agenda for the different components of that pie chart. Because as you know, when we do resurfacing, we also do sidewalks and ADA ramps. And, you know, for requirements, bring bring those adjoining ramps and sidewalks into compliance with ADA. And and do our best to, you know, work with citizens throughout the community that have special needs that need immediate attention. So there's a lot of, lot of things that come out of that pot of money that do do a lot of good infrastructure wise. Next slide, please. So the the map we're proposing tonight includes F Y twenty three, which was brought up last year. As City Manager mentioned, we we bring a couple of years at the same time. So that red is streets who are pretty much with what was approved last year. F Y twenty three B is in orange, and that's using additional funds provided through the American Rescue Plan. And then the the blue is what we're proposing for F Y twenty four, which would be, of course, next year's program. Next slide, please. So we use a ten-point pazer scale to rate our roads. Many of you aware of this, but it's just a good refresher. Ten being a brand-new excellent condition, one being basically needs to be closed type of thing. So we use that pazer assessment scale for our concrete and asphalt roads. Next slide, please. And then we input those, that information into a software. And with the software takes into account things like the functional class of the road, the roadside environment, the surf service type, the surface type, the average daily traffic, and then, of course, our pazer system rating. And the software looks at the entire city, all the streets that are are public that we rate. And also factors in budget constraints and then also takes into account block-by-block infrastructure and other projects. Obviously, we don't want to resurface a street that's going to have a water main replaced on it in two years. So all that's inputs into the systems that we make good decisions. Next slide, please. Staff also, you know, groups, street segments together as as recommended output by the software. Because there are efficiencies with our contractor in order to, you know, be be efficient with mobilization operations. It's better to do several blocks in a row as opposed to do this one block, skip a couple of blocks, do another block. It it's much more efficient for our operations to be able to to do adjoining blocks. And so we try to take advantage of that as much as possible by grouping streets either, you know, in a longer length or in the same neighborhood, so that the equipment doesn't have to be picked up on a low buoy and moved to a different part of town. Just makes our contractor that much more efficient, gives us better pricing as a community. So, next slide, please. We're asking tonight not only to approve the streets, but also to approve a to the process to waive the bid. And what that does is it simplifies our timeframe and our timeline there. As you can see, you know, in the past, we've had only one bidder for our streets. And that is the company that we're asking to to do the bid waiver to and negotiate with. In this case, we're also thinking that with the F Y twenty three B project that we would put that together as a bid package for later this summer. And go ahead and bid that as a smaller package, just to see, is there anybody else out there who would be interested in bidding our streets? Years ago, we used to have, you know, as many as three bidders on our streets, but only on the smaller package, not never on the bigger package. So we're just trying to be efficient in the process. We know that if we waive bids, then the staff can work directly with the contractor upfront. Answer questions, be more specific, more deliberate about the project and and tweaking it so that we are able to get the best price possible. And as, as we all know, the prices have gone up in the last year. And, you know, we're trying to take that into account with our estimates and so forth. But, you know, the the true reflection that will be in the prices we get back from the contractor. But with the waived process, we can talk with them and and figure out the, you know, any efficiencies that could be gained. So, next slide, please. And then, as the City Manager mentioned, we have the Bloomington Streets website. We post project updates there, information about road construction, there's an interactive map. And people can sign up for email notifications for for projects and updates. Next slide, please. And that's it, and we'll turn it back to Mayor and Council for any questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Kevin. Do we have any questions? Okay, Councilmember Becker?
Kevin, you're gonna, you're gonna know this question because I asked it to you almost exactly a year ago. And it was, with what you have budgeted, both base budget and the plus, is that enough to make us on the path to recovery versus just maintaining status quo? Last time I asked you, you said no. Now we're adding two million, but we're dealing with some pretty high inflationary costs. I don't think it's enough. Can you convince me that it is?
Well, I'll also turn to my my colleague here who also might have some thoughts on that.
Can you hear me? So, you know, if we backed up in time a year ago and we added two million, I think we would be making some headway. But because of the inflationary component, I'd say right now the two million brings us to flush.
So that's what I expected. With that answer, you know, we've all pushed for quite a while that we need to do a little bit more to start moving us forward. Is there a way you can bring more forward?
I think at some point we hit a a capacity issue. We're starting to see a reflection in the construction market due to the American Rescue Funds entering into the market. There's supply issues, obviously labor issues as well. I think when we look at adding the the second contract, we're going to be right at capacity with current staff and the contractors. And if we added any more this year, we could expect higher prices as a result of that. Even than, even more than what we're, we anticipate to see here with the negotiations. I think in the future, if there was an ability to consistently add, you know, take the five million dollar annual program and make it a six or seven on an annual basis or even an eight, that's the way you make headway with the overall system condition.
So what I'm hearing you say is that going forward, this year we're at capacity, so we're doing what we can. Going forward, you're going to present us with, this is how much money we need as opposed to, this is what we can do for the budget that you're giving me.
We can do that, yes.
I would like that. I don't know about everybody else, but.
Thank you, Councilmember Monday.
So I'm interested to know first, what's the unit of measure that we use to understand how much work we're actually going to be doing as opposed to how much money we're going to be spending? Is is that in square yards paved, speaking specifically about the streets, linear feet? I'm just interested in understanding how much actual output from this process we'll be seeing.
Well, out of, out of the F Y twenty three first contract, we'd, we're anticipating fifteen point two lane miles. One lane mile is five thousand two hundred eighty feet by twelve foot wide. So in F Y twenty three, fifteen point two, the second contract, about four point nine.
And how much did we do, say, the last two or three years?
I would say the F Y twenty two was near the fifteen lane miles, somewhere around there.
And looking back, has that been fairly steady?
Yeah, it it has for, ever since we moved to the about five million dollars a year for resurfacing, it's been in that same range. Yes.
So essentially then, during this entire time, the amount of money we've been spending has translated into an equal transfer in terms of the amount of lane miles that we're resurfacing?
There, there was a time when we weren't spending, you know, the five million a year. It's been a few years ago now, right? But there was a time we were doing less.
I I'd like to suggest that we start tracking some of these measures such as cost per lane mile paved so that we can understand when we're looking at budgetary changes, what output or results our residents are going to be seeing as a result of that spend. You know, I've read reports that say the inflation associated with asphalt is as much as plus forty percent due to its petroleum-based dependencies. So even with the amount additional that we're spending, it's conceivable that we could in fact see fewer linear miles paved for the spend that we're talking about here. I just want to check my thinking on that before I move on to other questions.
Yeah, that that is one of the challenges in this market is that as prices increase, the amount we can do, you know, for the same dollars a roads, yes.
And so how long have we been using what was described as the more efficient process with a singular contractor?
It's, it's been a few years. I don't remember, you know, I've been been around long enough. I don't remember specifically the year we started that, but it's been in in the recent history here.
So and in reading some of the reports from prior years, you know, we reference more efficient, more efficient. And I'm interested to know how that translates into actual increases in the amount of of miles paved. So when we, again, when we say we're being more efficient, I'm just interested in understanding the basis for for that comment.
So, you know, that happened before my time here, but I would surmise that the efficiency is in the negotiation with contractor. I think the the concern is that if you don't, if we don't negotiate, they really have you know, the ability to set their price, and we don't have a way to discuss that and figure out what's, what's, what's going on there. So, you know, like last year, when I negotiated the prices with them, I was able to flag some things that seemed out of ordinary to me. And then I was able to discuss with them a way to bring that price down. That would be the way that I would view the efficiency is versus them just setting the price, which would be in a, in a bid market situation. Ideally, you'd want to have minimum of two to three bidders. We use a special type of mix called the stone matrix asphalt mix, which gives us greater longevity on the roads. Plus the volume, and then some of these roads are fairly busy and they require traffic control. So there's these nuances that we're dealing with all the time. When we go back to efficiencies, it's our ability to ask the contractor, well, hey, we're seeing something here. Why is that? And then maybe they propose something different too. And then we're able to bring that price down to something reasonable.
I'd like to suggest we explore using an actual unit of output results that we can relate to, that our residents can relate to, as opposed to just talking about the dollars spent so that we can demonstrate with with math, with facts, that we are in fact able to achieve more paving for the same or lower price, which to me is what efficiency is designed as. We're creating additional capacity for outcomes at the same or lower cost. The other observations I have just relate to the the actual paving that we're going to be seeing here on the map. And and I know that this isn't just unique to my ward, but you know, over the last year, Ward three didn't actually show on the map that was queued up on the city's website as it relates to roads being paved. And I noticed that in twenty twenty three, we're in the same boat. It does show now on there, but zero roads being paved in Ward three during this proposal. I bring this up because I have one neighborhood over the Evergreen area. I know you guys go out there a lot to address one-off concerns about significant potholes and things of that nature. It looks to me like on your software, eighty percent of their streets are rated fair or below with only two showing in the green. And I think there are a couple of yellows in there. So with a neighborhood like that, and then I have another neighborhood, suburban East Park area, where a hundred percent of the streets are actually showing it fair or below. So I know we're using algorithms plus, you know, human judgment in this, which which I agree that it should be more than just an algorithm. So, but I do want to bring up that even with this additional spend, there is a significant amount of labor being expended and also quality of life impacts to our residents who are experiencing not just potholes, damage to their vehicles, and so on and so forth. I agree with Councilmember Becker. I don't think our funding is sufficient. But I also think we should be articulating this work from an outcome perspective so that we can know in comparison an apple and an apple, if we are in fact actually making improvements in raising the overall quality of our streets.
Thank you. Councilmember Crebill and Bowlin and then Councilmember Ward.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Kevin, for all you do and your staff. Wanted to specifically compliment Craig. We've had a couple of conference calls with one of my residents relating to the Grove and the 2100 East, the east boundary of it. So I know he really appreciates you working with him. So wanted to say that we have how many total lane miles in Bloomington? Eight hundred?
Eight hundred, yeah.
Okay, so we're doing about 15 or so lane miles a year for out of the 800. On the capacity question, it seems like in the past, I remember that some some roads planned to be done in a year aren't gotten to in a year, and so we move them to the next year. So if we're doing that, how can we actually add to the amount of roads we're doing in one year, if that makes sense?
Well, so let's take this current fiscal year. You know, we're still wrapping up the previous work from last fiscal year. When we, you know, we have a construction season window. By the time that we get through the process like now, we really can only pave up through, say, Halloween or so.
Say that last part again?
We can only pave pave up through Halloween due to the weather. So there's a shutdown period for winter. If we didn't have that, you know, we could get more work done. So there's there's only just physically so much that can be done, and then that rolls over into the next fiscal year. But when I talked with particularly Row about capacity, they were thinking they could add upwards of two to three million to the 5 million and still get done within that original timeline, which is about a year. Whether or not it crosses over calendar years, it's still a physical year. That's what they're thinking.
Okay. Let's see, I appreciate the the roads in Ward Eight that are that are being done. And I looked at all the streets and that are being done, and most of them are three or below, I think. Just kind of a kind of in the weeds kind of thing I just noticed. So you know where the Meadows is, it's kind of round. I just noticed that we're one of the streets is like a five or six. Another one we're doing, I think it's this year. But it seems to make sense to do that all at once, just to just throwing that out there. And I know on Oakland, right above that, that's being done in 2024, but it still looks to be in pretty good condition, like a five or a six. Just just throwing that out there. What about the state? You know, a lot of times, you know, people are like, we got potholes, but like, no, that's not us. It's the state. We always hear they're going to do it soon. They're going to come to Bloomington and do our roads, state roads soon. You know, if somebody was my constituent was going to ask me something, what can I tell them? Like as the latest about the state?
The state with their multi-year plan, because the state does publish every year an update to their multi-year plan. The Route Nine project is still in there. They've had, you know, with with the state and even when we use state motor fuel tax, there's additional hurdles we have to, you know, encounter, and the state is actually still getting approvals on their own hurdles with some of the stuff with Route Nine project. That is still in their plan. The latest we heard is that they intend to start on the west side of Bloomington. So that would be out, you know, by Martin Luther King Drive. Yeah, working Market Street and then, of course, you know, to Henshaw, to Locust and working their way east, if you will, across Bloomington. But it's more than likely to be at least a four-year, four, split into four parts project. They haven't made final determination exactly on that yet, but they're saying they'll start at the west end first, once they get approval. But they're they're not to the to the point yet where they've got the phase two construction plans prepared. They're still finishing those approvals with phase one. There's also early planning work going on with US 51. So the corridor basically from, say, Olive Street down by City Hall, all the way north into Normal, around Gregory Street through the ISU campus. That is being looked at right now in phase one engineering, not only for street resurfacing, but ADA accommodations, bike lanes and everything is under consideration there. Once the phase one draft plans are prepared, the consultant and the IDOT will be presenting that to the public. So at some point, the public can comment on that. We haven't seen any, you know, final phase one designs yet on that yet, but that's coming. And then Route 150 Morrissey, there's money in the multi-year plan for the state to do a project that would include that area of, say, Oakland Avenue south to Veterans Parkway on Morrissey. So that is also in the works. So there is quite a bit of stuff in the state's multi-year program. And of course, this year, I believe Veterans Parkway to the north of Clearwater, you know, that if remember, they did the the central section a few years ago, they did the section of veterans to the south last year, and then this year, I believe they're going to go and finish the part up through from Clearwater, basically up to Normal, to the north end by the bridge.
Yeah, thanks for that detailed answer. What about Empire?
Empire would be included with the Route Nine.
Route Nine, okay. You said, okay, you said that, okay.
Yep.
I remember just on on cost per lane mile. This is when I went through Bloomington 101, like in 2016, and Scott put, he does a presentation like, how much does a fire truck cost? That kind of thing. And I remember a slide, it was like one lane mile cost $800,000. I'm assuming it's a lot higher now.
Yeah, I you know what the current is?
No, I don't. I wish I did, you know, having done this for a long time, you get different numbers in your head.
Yeah, I understand.
You know, it's kind of like what, you know, a gallon of milk used to cost. You know, I mean, I remember when asphalt was $70 a ton. Now, last year, we paid $146 tons, almost double. And that's in 25 years. And then I would say we're anticipating, I mean, the CPI went up January to January 10%, just straight over everything. And as your colleague mentioned, the petroleum products are quite a bit higher. So we're not sure how that'll track out.
Thanks, Craig, and one last comment. I mentioned this to you, Tim. It seems like if we're going to do the add-ons on a consistent basis, that we should have this, these add-ons come from the general fund versus ARP. Seems like with all our housing issues, maybe more of a focus should be of ARP should be on on housing, just to comment. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I think Councilmember Bowlin was next, right? And then Councilmember Ward?
You just you decide.
Oh, no, go ahead, because I thought Councilmember Bowlin and then Ward, and then we'll go with Councilmember Urban.
Okay, I'm just going to kind of echo what Councilmember Crable said, that 15 lane miles out of 800? Are you listening, people in the audience? It's going to take forever to move this forward. And this is out of asphalt and concrete, which means it also includes sidewalks. Is that correct?
Sidewalks is included, yes.
I went and looked at the sidewalk plan, and these are 2014 numbers. And I think the annual is something like $675,000 just for sidewalks. And I remember with the street master plan came out, it was like 8 million in that year's numbers. And here we are in 2022 without any increase. As a matter of fact, we're less. And the costs are going up. So I'm not going to criticize the messengers here. This falls on the council for funding. And I want to fund the plan to echo Councilmember Becker's point. I don't know where that money is going to come from, but all I hear from my constituents is pothole, pothole, pothole. And we need to fund you guys to get this done. I understand they can't take on all the work at once, you know, we can only do a certain amount of work. But we need to be able to fund, maybe fund the sidewalk separately and put that 8 million to the streets to move forward. You guys figure it out, but I want the plan funded.
Thank you, Councilmember Ward.
Thank you. Two comments and a question. First off, thank you, Mr. Sean Quiler, for meeting with residents of Ward Seven a few days ago. I know that that we were quite appreciative of you taking your time, especially at the end of probably a long day to make time for that. Secondly, I wish that we could, this is more of a suggestion than a comment. I wish that we could include some information similar to what Mr. Cote explained regarding the state streets. Some links to those those plans on our own website. Because I think a lot of times people are complaining about roads that are not in our purview. And it would be great to be able to point them in the direction of something as clear and concise as what you said to us by way of explanation. So that's a suggestion for the the page. And then the the other question that I had, I don't know if we can go back to the slide that had the map for FY23 and 24. And if anybody could just clarify for me what the pavement priority lines are all about in green. Because I I guess I'm just not, it it seems like most of most of the city is in green. And I know some of those those roads have already been worked on. And so I'm just trying to get clarity about what that what that means and the legend.
So it's actually just a GIS layer. It really our our pavement system is in a graphical information system. So when you see the green, it just means that those are all the streets that are in the city of Bloomington.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you, Councilmember Urban.
I think Tom had his slide on before.
You okay?
Whatever. Go ahead. All right, thank you. Thank you both for the presentation. I'm going to echo what the other council has said. 15 lane miles out of 800 is not enough. When all of our constituents, I apologize, maybe not all of them, I might have five that aren't complaining about the roads out of 6,000, maybe. So we have got to do better. We need to set a higher bar and we need to do better. And I'm just looking at you and telling you that. And I believe the rest of council is basically echoing that here. So let's set a higher bar and do better. When I look at you and I say that, you probably could say back to me, all right, how can I do better? So in this agenda that I'm looking at, authorization to waive the technical bidding requirements and authorization for city staff to negotiate a contract with Row Construction, a division of United Contractors Midwest. So you're asking us to waive technical bidding requirements and give you exclusive rights with one company to pay 15 miles of road. How about maybe try three or four different companies, a little price bargaining, a little competition, maybe some more mileage? Maybe Row wants to do 15, maybe another company will do 10. You know, let's not lock ourselves down into one thing. So I don't know how, but I'm going to need, ask my other council to help me amend that to give you a little bit more flexibility here and not lock you into just one single company. Because we want better pricing, so let's have a little bidding wars if you need to. You know, say, hey, Row, if you're not going to come down and and meet us at our price range, I'll go get someone else to do it. So let's let's not lock you in, and maybe the other council can help just to amend this to where we give you a little bit more flexibility to get better pricing and get more miles and get more roads done so that if you guys start doing more roads, our roads will look good and then we look good. And if we look good, we get reelected, even though I'm not running. Got it? Thank you. That's all I want to yell at you about. I'm done.
Well, if I could, the reason for Row is that that is the only company we have available to do our roads. That, yeah, there's not not anybody else. McLean County Asphalt has bid projects in the past. They don't want to take on anything. And Craig actually reached out to them and talked to them. You know, we we used to have them bid on projects under $1 million. They don't even want to take on that much work. And the only other bidder is in Pontiac, and they're they're not interested at this point because, you know, the council, we have that out of town, you know, local preference policy. So that impacts, they're already penalized for traveling all the way to Bloomington, and then they're double penalized because of our local preference policy. So we only have Row to work with, unfortunately. Yeah, and and one of the you know, one of the difficulties too is siding an asphalt plant in McLean County. Those are like siding landfills. No one wants them in their backyard. So there's only a handful of asphalt plants in McLean County. And so we have Row and we have McLean County Asphalt, and we just have no other competition.
I might add, that's that's why with the second contract, we did strategize to do a asphalt mix that McLean could do. It's a lower volume of tonnage to do. So that's our hope that that second contract, the B contract, we'll put that out to bid. And then that McLean would step forward and and as Kevin said, Apple, and then we anticipate Row. But the larger contract, the 5 million, my understanding is, as Kevin's saying, Row is the only basically player that's available.
Okay, Councilmember Crumpler.
Thank you, Mayor, and Kevin and Craig, thank you so much for this presentation this evening. I always learn a lot listening to you two. My question, I guess, is I've heard a lot of talk about capacity this evening, affected by the weather, affected by the market and that sort of thing. I wonder if if we, as we move forward and try to fund, you know, the work, this important work that you're doing in more preferential ways, what about hiring more personnel? I I wonder if that is a factor in in the amount of work, you know, that you are able to do on any given fiscal year? And would that be something that the council should consider as as we move forward with, you know, this work?
You know, the 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 two run together. So, you know, when we go to the contractor capacity, I think if council was to demarcate additional funding annually, I think contractors such as Row adjust their their workforce accordingly. What my understanding with Row, and I came from the Champaigner-Bana area, spent 14 years there, is that what's hard for contractors is when they see a spike. And maybe a spike comes through additional DOT work or additional funding from a municipality, and then they see a downturn. So they, you know, it's hard for them to keep their workforce steadily busy. So they're looking for, if you if if you really want to grow it, you you need steady, you know, steady funding every year. That helps the contractors, then I think that's when the marketplace adjusts. Back to staff, I think, yeah, as the contractors' work increases, the staff's work increases too. We put this contract out doing in-house work. We also monitor it in-house as well. So, yes, as we grow the program, we would certainly need additional staff.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Eaming.
Thank you. First, thanks for thinking about the streets north of Empire. I know that you've been monitoring them from day one when I I started serving Ward Four. And and the poor rating is consistent. And I know you've you've been really watching it, and I'm really glad to see that it's on the the map. But it it made me think of a broader question about kind of what but the appetite is generally. Like when we think of the PESAR rating and a lot of factors go in. Like when we think of the PESAR rating and a lot of factors go into it, is a fair, we want them all to be good and higher, but is fair okay? Are we okay with that, knowing that we are not alone in having miles of road that will constantly need maintenance and repair and resurfacing and and all of the the above? Especially given the weather that that we sometimes enjoy in Bloomington Normal. And and I just, I wonder if some of it is educating all of us to think more about, you know, that this is we're at we're at capacity and I appreciate that you're putting more funding into it. What I'm hearing you say is this, this is the capacity right now, given all of the mitigating factors. The price, supply and demand issues, the nature of of the personnel required, the window of when you can do the work. That this this is the capacity. And it's and so we we are being responsive. We are listening. We are trying to get ahead of something that we're always going to be chasing to improve. It's just the nature of producing more infrastructure than would then can be at a at a great rating across the states, let alone our county and community. So I just want to reflect on the larger question of communicating what might be good enough in terms of the rating. What what really constitutes capacity that we are, we are challenged by it, but we're determined to keep trying to meet it. And and finally, in that bigger question, what about this infrastructure bill that just got funded federally? I mean, when I look look ahead, because we're not alone in this problem, clearly it's a problem, there's funding available. That will affect supply and demand. We have a lot of inflationary issues. But do you foresee in the the near future that we might be able to access more funding, potentially hire more folks? And I I also appreciate that we're giving you some leeway to negotiate with a single contractor so that you can potentially spend less money. Like that's what I I understood that 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 meant, that it's when you go to bid, it's fixed. But this way, you might have some capacity to negotiate at the table. So it, I I'd like to look just beyond kind of miles and dollars and getting everybody to to an eight. Roads are important, but a lot of other things are too.
One item that I neglected to mention is, you know, we have resurfacing capacity. But there's a a second part of this that we haven't really talked about, and that is basically keeping the good roads good. And that's where there could be additional capacity. So, you know, we're talking pavement preservation. We're talking these, those are different contractors than, say, a row. And that's a strategy that Kevin and I have talked about. But quite frankly, it's tough. And and here's where it's tough is that means that we channel some funds to keeping those good roads good. And yet there's other roads that need help, right? So, you know, the public, there's an educational component to that, right? It's the, one of the analogies that I use is I grew up in an in an older home. And it had wood siding, right? If if you're taking care of that, you know, you can get a greater life out of that home exterior. But if it begins to get neglected and the water gets in there and then the the cedar siding rots, then you've got to spend a lot more money. It's just like roads, really. I mean, you know, once the roads get to a certain point, now we're spending more money. Whereas if we shifted some of that to the front end. But it's tough because, I mean, I get calls all the time and, you know, there's going to have to be an education component to that if we take some of that strategy. That is, that is the, I guess I'll use the term more modern strategy that a lot of communities are doing, keep the good roads good. You know, years ago, I mean, when I started twenty-five years ago, we built more roads, we reconstructed roads, and then we began to shift to maintaining them. And now we're shifting to keeping the good roads good.
Thank you. Quick question for either one of you. I know roads are very expensive. We spend a lot of money, you know, laying them down and and also, you know, fixing, preserving. Are there any technologies out there to consider for the future that would allow us to spend less money on roads? Because I, you know, one of the frustrating things for me is the fact that, you know, here we are, we're spending seven, eight, nine, ten million dollars, you know, every year and only to find ourselves having to do that. I mean, if we could cut that down, because we have these emerging technologies to even half, we could do so much more with money. So what what are you hearing about what's out there? Or is there nothing?
No, we, you know, go to conferences and try to keep up with the latest. As Craig mentioned, we use SMA Stone Matrix Asphalt. We've only been using that for maybe ten or twelve years now. That is something that is a newer technology as far as being able to use that on local streets. The the Tollways used it for a while, IDOTs used it a little bit, but but honestly, that that's a mix that holds up much better under certain conditions with heavier traffic and also as overlay on on concrete streets. You know, as Craig mentioned, a lot of times, you know, the concrete streets, you know, when when he and I went through school, we learned, you know, you want to build a concrete pavement because you're going to get at least forty years out of it or maybe sixty or eighty years out of it before you really have to to do much with it. Well, unfortunately, as many of you know, our concrete streets have a joint deterioration that occurs. And that that's something that's really, you know, in the, since the eighties, since some of the first streets we saw that on was like Martin Luther King Dry, which was built in the eighties, you know. It's something that we've been been trying to learn more about, ways to prevent it from occurring. Talked to, you know, researchers at University of Iowa, University of Illinois, and Texas and and all these different places. And, you know, we've learned strategies to to try to help them along and and keep from having to reconstruct them, which is very expensive. But, yeah, we're always looking at what what's the latest and and knowing that, you know, some of the payments that were built a hundred years ago might outlast, you know, a concrete street that's built unfortunately today. And we're trying to learn what what are those differences and and what can be done done better. That's not to say that every concrete street built today is going to have the problem, but a number of them have. And unfortunately, a lot of streets were built in the eighties and nineties as the city grew. And now, you know, we're having to to work with them and spend resources on them. Craig, you want to add anything?
No, I think I think Kevin's right. I mean, you know, I think the SMA mix, like I mentioned, I was in Champaigner-Bana, that that's not available there. There has to be a special type of aggregate and and we're fairly fortunate in this area to have that aggregate available to us. It also uses a polymer asphalt, a binder, so to speak. As we talk about pavement preservation, we do a bracklamine product on the streets to help, you know, keep them sealed. Kevin's been using that for, you know, over a decade, decade and a half. I was using it where I used to work too before I came here. The hardest part, though, Mayor, is is our central Illinois weather, very frankly. It's just tough. When you see even the amount of temperature swings we've experienced in the last week, you know, if we got down to freezing and then we go back up, it's just really tough on the roads. So keeping that moisture out, the water out is really key. But, you know, we we do try to keep up with technology. But then you come back to the marketplace, you know. I've looked at some products that, you know, for potholes, but they're super expensive, super expensive, you know. And they appeared at research conferences and stuff like that, but they're really not at that point in the marketplace to, you know, massively use. We're always looking.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Councilmember Motney and then Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. What rating does the street have to have for the pavement preservation to be a relevant solution?
We typically, well, you look at a five or above. So when we get to a three and a four, it's usually resurfacing almost all of these. The first contract is, has an average of three point two. There's only a few fours in that group. Same thing with the second contract, that's a three point one. There's only just one or two fours in there. And it has to do with proximity more than anything, just grabbing that adjacent street with it.
Yeah, so just, you know, this conversation about how much money we're spending. I mean, really, if my math is right here, I mean, we're talking about roughly two percent of our budget. We're spending on this, a core issue, which is a foundational reason that local government exists, to provide infrastructure for its people. So with this eight hundred lane miles with fifteen lane miles roughly each year, I mean, that's less than two percent of a hit rate on these roads. And yet we have a rating structure that, from prior discussions, forty-two percent of our streets being rated fair or lower. So I just want to put that out there because the reality of our weather and the condition of our streets is fact based. And I think we need to come to some agreement, unit of measure of what it's going to take to make strides in catching up and getting us to a point where we truly can maintain and use the techniques that you're talking about to maintain once we've reached a level of attainment that would even allow us to do that. So and I'm I'm interested to, back to your time in engineering school, I'm sure you guys probably used problem statement methodologies like A three or whatever. I would love to see laid out what it would really take to raise our street structure to something that we can consume and lay out a multi-year plan that actually closes the gap on that so that we'll know again from a fact basis, the amount of money we could estimate spending in order to close that gap. I think it's important for us to all have that in mind as we make decisions about alternative uses for discretionary funding. So thank you again.
Extension, time extension? Okay. Can I have a motion to extend time?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, second by Councilmember Becker. Let's make it for five minutes, because I don't see, I think we've pretty much exhausted this topic.
I'll just do a quick roll call. Let's see, Councilmember Walsh. Councilmember Bowlin. Councilmember Motney. Councilmember Emig. Councilmember Becker. Councilmember Urban. Councilmember Ward. Councilmember Crable. Councilmember Crumpler. Thank you.
Okay, awesome, great. You have five minutes to yourself.
Well, thank you. And and thank you, John, for the presentation and putting together something like this. I can, I I sit behind a computer desk all day long, and that's what I do. And and putting something like this together is really just tremendous to turn around and watch and see. And I just have a couple of questions on the overall project plan. One is, and and I don't know if there's such a projects out there like this or not, in which are there any companies out there who are developing new technology? Who are looking for places like Bloomington that they want to turn around and come to us and say, hey, we want to lay down a mile of road in your town for free as a test, because we want to show how great our road is and how great our pavement is. Are there any programs like that out there that that we can explore to get somebody to come, give us a helping hand, I'll say?
So at my pre, I I worked for the city of Burbana in the past, and I looked into that heavily. There were some programs through the Illinois Department of Transportation where you could do what they called experimental features. The the issue with experimental features, though, was not just the installation we had to monitor for a period of time. And as most municipalities, we were on the lean side with staff. So there just wasn't the bandwidth to be able to consistently monitor that through time. So we looked at a third party. The cost was quite high. And again, you know, the focus was being on fiscally conservative there. It could be looked at. Those things can be pursued, but obviously they take funds and staff.
Well, I I look at that and just go, let's say somebody came in and and they they just wanted to lay down half a mile of experimental pavement. And we get into the staffing cost of monitoring that. Well, how much would that half a mile of of lane or two lane cost us? And if we're not having to pay for that half a mile or that mile, would we be able to then hire additional staff to do that monitoring and still have a cost savings overall for something like that for the monitoring? So just a thought along that process. My next question comes to looking overall at the complete infrastructure. And when you look at our roads, how many of our roads, what what would you say when you take from the group, from the bottom up, how how many of our roads are rotting from the bottom? That are sewers, that we have sewer issues? And does that cause an issue overall with the pavement above the sewer, the sewers?
So one of the things that we do on an annual basis is have a contractor televise our sewers. We, the city has some of our own televising equipment that's usually used for figuring out problems going on with sewers and backups. But in order to really be able to know what our sewers look like, we've, you know, a couple of years ago did a very aggressive almost two million dollar CCTV assessment contract. And we continue to spend about four hundred thousand a year to televise and rate our sewers. One of the things that we do is before the 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 streets that are going to be resurfaced, they are televised so that we can get any sewer repairs that the camera identifies done before the before the road is resurfaced. We also look for opportunities with with water main and and so forth to make those corrections. We we can't find every every defect. And so you see new new pavement that sometimes is dug up because we we don't assess necessarily every sewer service or every water service. And so if you picture, you know, under our roads is typically a sewer main and a water main. And off those pipes are pipes that go into your home. And while we can look up the sewer service from the main pipe and see a little ways, we can't see all the way. And so sometimes there's other defects besides the city sewer that causes a, you know, a repair have to have to be made in the road. But we we make every effort we can to assess the underground infrastructure prior to the street being resurfaced.
My my last question, and it, and I know it's not one of our city streets, the state. And I guess it's a question overall that who can we as council, what can we do? And I'm looking specifically at West Market. When you when you drive on West Market, you can't tell me the condition of that road is not having an economic impact on the city. That people come into town from that side, and why do they want to come here? If they come from the west side there on West Market, why would they want to come build here? Why would they want to come move a business here? Anything like that. So who who can we as a council put pressure on at the state on to to help our residents that we can, we can lessen that economic impact? Maybe even make it a road that people be like, wow, they really take care of their streets here. Because someone coming into town isn't going to go, that's a state highway, that's the state's fault. They're going to go, wow, Bloomington doesn't take care of their streets.
And that, as I mentioned, is part of the state's multi-year plan is to, you know, start at that end of market and fix it. It's not not this year that the work's going to be done. But IDOT has it in their multi-year plan to do that. So, you know, and District Five is our district, we can certainly, you know, give them feedback, and we have. I mean, we we know the staff down there, but if the elected want to provide feedback, you're certainly welcome to. But the state is planning to do that road. It it's in their multi-year plan, so.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I had very quick, very quick, thirty, twenty seconds. Along with those lines, I don't know if we have been trying to pressure our state representatives to pressure the Department of Transportation.
Thank you. Did we have, we didn't have a motion yet, I believe. Okay. Oh, okay, all right. Oh, okay, all right.
All second.
Okay, all right. And now let's vote. Get these guys off the cool seat.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the item passes, are no needs to announce. Next item on the agenda is item 10E, consideration action on an ordinance amending the city code to create the arts and entertainment department to include the position of director and renaming the Parks, Recreation and Cultural Arts Department to Parks and Recreation Department as requested by the Administration Department. City Manager, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is one that we've discussed in the past. Got some encouraging feedback from the elected officials. Along with the change in the Parks and Recreation Division, there's going to be a creation of an arts and entertainment director position that will oversee the, those functions at the Coliseum, the VCPA, and entertainment in the downtown district for the city. This is something that we see an opportunity to not outsource by contract the administration of the Coliseum like we've done in the past. The last company was Venue Works, and we ended that contract as it was related to COVID a year early. And we've had this time to explore what the opportunities were. So from a staff standpoint, this was an all hands on deck moment, trying to pursue different opportunities and such. And this is where we've landed, the creation of this department, this position. It's posted nationally. Quite a few staff members and departments have been very involved in this. And then one thing to be very clear, the attraction of entertainment, so the music, concerts as an example, that would be a separate contract to be done at a later date. I know that we have some interest here locally and likely has a capacity to fill some of the seats in the different venues, and then also have had those national conversations with some prominent players out in this part of the world, and feel that we have a market that we can provide the community. So it's exciting, and I want to turn this over. Deputy City Manager, anything additionally to add before we call on council and request approval?
Thank you, Tim. The only other thing to add is that we think that by doing this internally, we also can take advantage of some efficiencies in terms of shared resources that already exist. So for example, in the past, you would have two completely different staffs at the arena and the VCPA who did, who performed similar functions, things like production or, or some of the other ticketing or, or in that kind of thing. We think that by combining, we can take advantage of utilizing those services across both, both facilities, which should result in some cost savings.
Okay, thank you. Is there, are there questions or a motion? Question?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and second. Emig and Urban? Question?
I just have, I just have one question, and this is for Tim. I, you know, I, I, I like the idea. I like Billy's notion of, of cost saving. I think, you know, separating the Parks Recreation and creating a entertainment and management department makes a lot of sense structurally for the city. You know, I, as I was reading over the, the documents for this evening, I noticed that the starting salary is $110,000 potentially for this individual. I wonder, is this commensurate with similar positions, you know, in our sister cities around the community? Sort of where did this number come from?
It is. We actually reached out to the private sector that operate these kinds of venues, and then to the different municipalities that have similar venues. And it is in line, you know, with director level compensation at the city. So we did look externally.
That's all I had, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh?
Well, thank you. One question that I had regarding this position, and it's kind of a, I'm going to say a multi-layered question type of thing, is that we've got the one director position here that is up to $110,000, and we all know that, that that's just the salary cost, we get into the, all the additional costs that go along with hiring a person. And then what additional costs do you see with this department when it comes to, if you're hiring a director level person, are they going to have an administrative assistant? What, are they going to have an assistant director? And in positions such as that, are any positions going to be moving from Parks and Rec over to this department? And is this council, just a few weeks ago, I believe, passed the fiscal year budget? Is this included, this department included in that budget?
Great question, actually. Some of those costs are because there are positions that currently exist in Parks and Rec that will become a part of this department. There will be other recommendations for other staff to come forward that we would have to come forward with, with potentially additional costs. But the thing that I will say is, as we've run the facility in the past with private management, those were costs that we had with those private management companies as well. So it is a great question, but some of those are covered because that staff exists already in Parks and Rec. But some of those would not be, and we would come back to you with, with, with the request for funding for some of those positions.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other lights. Go ahead and vote.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Thank you.
The item passes, are no needs to announce. Next item is 10F, presentation of the Bloomington Police Department's 2021 Annual Report as requested by the Bloomington Police Department, and introductory remarks by City Manager, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight is the first of two public safety reports. The second one's not going to be tonight, Chief West, but the Fire Department will be presenting some time here in the near future. This is one that Chief Semington will be presenting on behalf of the Bloomington Police Department. Very excited to walk through the annual report, Chief.
Thank you, City Manager. Again, thanks to the City Council for allowing me the opportunity to share some of the, the good work. It's not only good work of the Police Department, but it's in collaboration with the community. These are the community stats, not necessarily only the Bloomington Police Department's. The statistic report was provided by the PD's Criminal Intelligence and Analysis Unit and led by Mr. Jack McQueen. As I navigate through the report, I would like to express that the success of crime reduction is a shared one with the community. Any increases in the crime certainly is a shared concern that we all have and one which can only be reduced or eliminated through a targeted and informed response by the Police Department, its residents and civic leaders. The number one goal of the Bloomington Police Department is to reduce crime and the fear of crime.
Phil, just in case we don't have it, you can go to the online agenda. And it would be page 273, and I think it runs through 284, so that'd be a way to do it. Chief, you need to hum some elevator music.
Everybody have a good weekend? Don't answer that.
Scroll up, please, thanks.
Up.
The Total NiBRS, which is the National Incident-Based Reporting System, was implemented by the FBI January 1st of 2021 in an effort by the FBI to improve crime data collection by police agencies throughout the United States and transition from the old United, my apologies, Unified Crime Reporting System, the UCR, which was one-dimensional and outdated. The NiBRS captures details of, on a single crime incident reported to the Police Department as well as on separate offenses in the same incident. It provides a greater context for the Police Department and includes such matters or profiles as location, time of day, solvability and other reporting factors. Next slide, please. So we went back and plugged in what NiBRS requires us to report from the old UCR format. And as laid out for you, 2020 compared to 2021, you will see some increases and certainly some decreases in a variety of categories. The most significant increase is fraud-related cases. That was up 116%. You will also notice some reductions. One is in burglary, breaking and entering, which was at 12%. And counterfeit and forgery was also at a 23% reduction, as well as theft and larceny. Vehicle theft also decreased by 13%. The grand total increase was just shy of 5%. Next, please. So in a review of those statistics, you can go to the next one, please. There was an impact of fraud in 2021. Through those first three months of 2020, there was an average of 11 fraud reports to the Bloomington Police Department. Near the end of March of 2020, we began to experience an increase, and that is in direct correlation to the fraudulent activity that was reported at the state and federal levels for COVID-19 financial relief. In January, February and March of 2021, we were taking an average of 40 fraud reports each month. This resulted in an 11.7% increase for 2021. Please notice, without the spike in fraud, the 2021 total NiBRS numbers as it relates to crime would have dipped by 1.7%. The Paycheck Protection Program, we have and are in the midst of investigating with our federal partners, hundreds of fraudulent claims as it pertains to PPP. Also unemployment fraud, of which I was a victim myself. Those were reported significantly during this timeframe as well. And then there was an uptick in fake stimulus checks that were moving throughout the community. Next, please. Homicides in 2021, which is certainly a concern and ongoing concern as we have started 2022. Arrests were made in three of the four homicides that were reported, and an investigation is still open from the incident that occurred November of 2021. Year-to-date, we have five homicides recorded, one of which is actually a suicide as it resulted in a suicide double homicide incident as a result of a, a domestic incident. We have experienced difficulty when it comes to homicide investigations, and to be very transparent, is the lack of, of cooperation by members of the community. And we, for instance, are aware of numerous witnesses to a variety of these homicides and have investigated those to the best of our ability, trying to ensure that the, we receive cooperation from the witnesses, but the witnesses are afraid to come forward. And it's, it's a cycle that, that is very concerning. The value of life, for instance, continues to alarm us as well. And the men and women are putting forth a great effort in using technology, for instance, to solve those. And we will continue working on those until we have a definitive outcome and be able to hold someone accountable for their actions. Next, please. Gun violence in 2021, the Bloomington Police Department recorded 31 shootings in 2021. That was up from 27 in the previous year. This statistic is actually a lot better than most of our like communities in, in central Illinois of our size and maybe slightly smaller, and that resonates throughout the nation. So most of the shootings have involved personal conflicts, gang-on-gang retaliation, and these gangs are, are loosely organized. Not, you know, your gang of the, the 1970s and 80s that had a, a very strict and tight organization. And then robberies of individuals of, of their guns and illicit drugs as well have been some of, of the motivations for these shootings. Next, please. Guns are, are very concerning. We, we do realize and experience an uptick in, in rifles, for instance, that, that have been used in some crimes. We worked the case with Normal Police Department here a few weeks ago when a pop-up party was occurring in their jurisdiction, and we were able to locate three individuals that were under investigation and a concern for the Bloomington Police Department. We had intelligence that provided information to us that these individuals tend to carry guns and may have, have shoot it, I'm sorry, may have shot at other individuals previously. And that collaboration with the Normal Police Department actually resulted in a seizure of an AK-47 and another load of handgun, which was, was very fortunate for that case. We did save lives. In Bloomington, we realized our first experience with the switch, which turns a semi-automatic Glock handgun into an automatic handgun. And it is federally illegal to possess the switch even without the handgun. And we were able to cooperate with our, our federal partners and at the ATF and the US Attorney's Office, and that led to an indictment of the individual that was carrying that, that switch in our downtown during the weekend. You'll see laid out there the various seizures that we, we've experienced, and some of these are as a result of search warrants and others are as a result of traffic stops. Seized handguns, for instance, increased by 118%. Stolen guns accounted for 73% of the seizures. And so far this year, we've seized 24 guns year-to-date. Next, please. Domestic violence in 2021, as you will see with the data, there was an increase of approximately 5.5% over the previous year, which is, which is consistent with nationals' results and studies, and has a direct correlation to COVID-19 and, and people not being able to get out of their homes, for instance, and go about a, a natural way of, of life. So there was a slight uptick each year from 2019 through 2020 and 2021. Next, please. Next, please. DUI arrests for 2021 resulted in 252, which is just under our five-year average of 258. We continue to remain committed to DUI enforcement and saving lives. And that is certainly a primary concern as it relates to traffic safety for the city of Bloomington. Next, please. A quick review of some of the trends that have been occurring in 2021. We have seen an uptick in methamphetamine, especially methamphetamine laced with opioids or fentanyl. That is concerning for us. It is cheaper to purchase, a lot cheaper than previous generations of methamphetamine. We don't see the bathtub or the meth labs anymore. The market's being flooded by Mexican drug trafficking organizations, and that's well documented by the federal government. And with the flooding of the market, some people are turning away from cocaine and heroin to methamphetamine. Narcan has been deployed on 43 individuals that were suspected of overdosing on drugs in 2021. And approximately 65% of those were because of fentanyl. Organized retail thefts have also been a problem in our region. We do experience people traveling from city to city in central Illinois, from other parts of the state, walking into our establishments or retail establishments, cleaning the shelves, dumping items into their bags. They come with cutters, for instance, to cut the cables. You may see it, Dick's Sporting Goods, for instance, for your most expensive items. They come in and they cut it and they dump those things in the bags and they leave. We've also experienced that at Best Buy. It is a trend that other departments have been experiencing throughout Illinois and specifically the city of Chicago in the most upscale stores throughout the city. In 2021, we handled 1,873 vehicle accidents. And in 2022, the goal is to reduce those on a four- or five-year statistical perspective by 10%. And we're committed to working with the community in an effort to do that, drive down injury and the costs associated with traffic fatalities and other incidents in the city of Bloomington. It's a collective effort that we're looking forward to creating upticks in education and visibility and traffic enforcement throughout the community. That is all I have to present. Next slide, please. If there are any questions, I could take those, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. And this side of us is for presentation only, so we're not voting on anything. Do we have any questions? Okay, Councilmember Ward.
Thank you, Chief, for this report. And thank you as well for the hard work of the police department on one particular incident that you referred to in passing almost in your report. And I wish you would say a little bit more about that hard work. I wanted to lift up my own thanks from residents of Ward Seven and my thanks for the hard work that was done on the pop-up party that took place a weekend or two back. I got numerous emails and concerns raised from citizens about that incident. And I can't say enough how thankful I am for the hard work that you and your department put into that in responding to it. It is an example, in my opinion, of working with the community. I thought there was some really nice partnership going on, not only within the community with residents, but also interdepartmental cooperation that was going on. And I wanted to lift up a few names in particular. Assistant Chief Paul Williams of the Operations Division. I understand that he was pretty significant in the coordination of the response and continued collaboration with the Normal PD, for example, Illinois State and McLean County Sheriff's Office. I also want to lift up Assistant Chief Ken Bays, who worked with him also in the city legal and code enforcement throughout this whole thing to bring that under control. Sergeant Ty Carlton was the field operations commander overseeing BPD's response Friday night and into Saturday morning. You've already mentioned at one point Mr. Jack McQueen and his Criminal Intelligence and Analysis Unit supporting the mission and all the extra officers and telecommunications who staffed the event to ensure that the community is much safer. Thank you for that. And I mean, as you said, the outcome of that was pretty significant. I would like to share, you know, comment directly from an email from one of the residents in the community who lifted up concerns. I think the actions the city took were in line with what occurred that evening. This makes me, as well as many others, feel a lot safer in the neighborhood. And so I just want to say thank you with regard to that.
Thank you. We appreciate the feedback.
Yeah, yeah. Can I also just ask a couple of questions about the content of the report? When you talked about shootings, were those, are the statistics that you give only shootings with injuries? Or would those include weapons discharges? I'm trying to think of what slide this was on.
Should be slide seven.
Gun violence in 2021, is that, yeah, down more? Yes, that one. Yeah, would those, does that graph include only injuries? Or would it also include any discharge of weapons?
So this includes any discharge of weapons as well?
Okay.
Yes.
And would suicides be included in weapons violations, or is that not considered a?
No, ma'am, that's not considered. We do not count that in these categories.
So that would be above and beyond?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay. And then there was a slide that mentioned the the number, this would have been like the Neighbors year-to-year comparison. It looked like there was a pretty significant increase in sex offenses from 114 to 152. Any thoughts on what might be behind that?
So we feel that perhaps that was one of the COVID outliers as well, because people are not, correct, you know, living life normally. That potentially, that had some influence on that statistic.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Crevel.
Yes, thank you, Chief. I'm going to keep this short. Just to say I thank you and your department for what you do. I thank you and your department for answering the many questions I've asked you since your tenure started. I have not, I've heard only positive things from my constituents about the department. Some of the answers you shared with me before, I just wanted to share with everyone else. I asked if all confiscated guns are destroyed, and you said yes. So I think that's a good thing. And also, even though you said, you know, police don't respond to medic calls, but every patrol car has an AED, Automated External Defibrillator, correct?
Yes.
Which is a good thing.
Yes.
And I did ask you about pretextual stops, but I'll be real brief on this. Meaning an officer pulls over motorists for minor traffic or equipment violation and then uses a stop to investigate a more serious crime. You indicated there's not anything that tracks that specifically, but you don't believe that's what your officers do, right?
Mr. Crevel, just the correction on that. So not necessarily. The officers have a freedom to go out and enforce traffic enforcement as they see fit based on the Illinois Vehicle Code.
Right.
And so they observe a violation. Certainly, they can act on that. Now, that is the majority. There is a minority where statistically speaking, we may have intelligence that, for instance, Jamal Simmington is in possession of a gun, but it's an anonymous call. And if a, and that's not enough in and of itself in most situations to conduct an investigatory stop. So officers can use the Illinois Vehicle Code, as has been established through the Supreme Court, as a means to stop a vehicle. And so that is used on occasion, and that is what I would call intelligence-led policing.
Thank you, Chief. And I did share with you a recent article from the Chicago Tribune about a number of communities, large and smaller, that are giving, getting away from stopping residents for minor traffic violations. But just from what you explained, it doesn't appear to be a problem here.
Does not appear to be a problem.
Right, right. That's a, yeah.
Correct, yes, sir.
And one last question. With mental health reports, is the department doing anything with the co-responder model at this point?
Yes, sir. So as everyone may be aware, 988 is forthcoming. And it's a tool that will hopefully relieve the police department of non-police-related calls for service. And upwards of 23% of our calls are mental health-related calls. And most of them do not involve any violence. And so there is an opportunity there to network with stakeholders. And I think 988 will provide that opportunity for the Bloomington Police Department to collaborate in those instances and only respond when necessary, meaning there's violence afoot or a law being broken. And so we look forward to the future and, you know, having those collaborative meetings with the proper stakeholders going forward as 988 becomes a reality sometime in 2022, is my understanding.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I don't have a question. I just want to thank the report. It's very informative.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Thank you. It doesn't look like we have any other questions. So thank you again, Chief Simmington, for your presentation.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, next item on the agenda is our city manager's discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And I ask for an extension of time because I need about 20 minutes. No, no, I don't.
Hard no.
I spared everybody, though. I do have four slides, a couple of follow-up comments. Outdoor Farmers Market, we are in this season. Last Saturday was kickoff. It was a gorgeous day, quite busy downtown. So that was very nice to see. Next slide. Second Saturday sidewalk sales, May 14th, coming up this Saturday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Next slide, please. Celebrate IEDC's 2022 Economic Development Week. IEDC is the International Economic Development Council. And it's one that I believe can be found on our website for sure on Bloomington Normal, McLean County Economic Development Council. I think it's BNBiz.org if you would like to see that further. Next slide. And this is one Sergeant Maddox. We just did honor him and his family recently, but this Ultimate Sacrifice Foundation, you'll see on Saturday, the 14th, sometime between 11:00 AM and 2:00 PM. This, I think it's a 1,600-mile trek, is going to come through the community. This is something that'll be posted to our website and definitely encourage support for that as well. Couple of additional items that I was going to share is that our bulk pickup. I don't know how Kevin and his crews are doing it because we really did have a tough time trying to get seasonal employees to fill the positions. But as of today, we are working through the zones and we are on track. The field gets that information to Catherine Murphy. Catherine Murphy does an excellent job of updating, and we're doing very well this year. So just wanted to provide that update. Then also next week, Committee of the Whole, we're going to have two presentations. Catherine Murphy is going to present on the My Bloomington app. This has been in existence for quite some time here at the community, but we, she did some cleanup. Just wanted to make sure that it was functioning as it should and think it's worthy of a presentation to the community as we push the community to this site. And we're promising that it works as it should. Also, I'll be presenting on the ARP, the ARPA funds for council. This is a discussion that we will provide an overview of the allowable uses. And I think that everybody is familiar with those, but don't want to assume. Over the course of having the ARPA funds, they have expanded those. And then going to make that presentation, hopefully council will give me some direction that we can possibly turn these into resolutions for areas of use where we actually pledge a certain dollar amount. And then the specific projects will come at a later date. And those will be approved by council. But infrastructure as an example, that's one that seems to get the most attention and out of the $13.4 million. And again, this is just an example. Would like to see direction from council to say 8 million of that $13.4 million is to be pledged to infrastructure-related projects. And then we have other categories as well that we can dedicate. And then possibly those come forward by resolution at the May 23rd meeting. And then real quick, also Craig and Kevin did an excellent job tonight presenting. It really is nice being able to educate the community on what our reality is, whether it's talking about the weather, whether it's talking about the history of where we've been as a community, whether it's educating the community on our reality with the contractors that are available for this type of work in our community. It's a nice discussion to have on a hot-button topic that I know council deals with all the time. So thank you very much.
Thank you, City Manager Gleason. Next is Mayor's Discussion. For the sake of brevity, I'm just gonna, again, congratulate Grant and welcome him to the Bloomington City Council. Look forward to everything you have to contribute. And also thank those who also participated in the interview process, the other candidates. And with that, I will say council member's discussion. Okay, great. You guys are a fun group. I guess at this point, there is no executive session, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Okay, all right. All those, if you'd signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.